This Monday after Easter, we hope everyone had a blessed and enjoyable Easter Sunday and Easter weekend. Welcome to our city council meeting. The meeting is officially called to order at 8:30, and we will start today with Chaplain Ralph Dawkins leading us in prayer, as well as the pledges. May we all stand.
Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke your word through prayer into this gathering of city officials and leaders and concerned citizens. I pray that you would use these city leaders, that you've given them the opportunity and responsibility to watch over our city and to keep it safe, and to bring economic prosperity, to produce jobs and revenue, and help San Angelo grow and progress. Lord, you said in your word that if we acknowledge you in all of our ways, that you would direct our paths. You said that if we delight ourselves in you, you would give us the desires of our hearts. And so, Father, I pray that you would give these servant leaders the knowledge, the wisdom, and the courage to deal with community issues, families, facilities, and businesses, and any other problems and issues that face our city and its people. And I pray that you would bless them to work together to tackle the agenda items on today. I pray for the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council members, and all the city and the city managers, and every person in department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. Lastly, I pray for the chief of police, the entire police force, the sheriff's department, fire chief, fire department, and all first responders who serve and protect our city, that they would continue to protect it and watch over it. In Jesus' name, amen. Let us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Happy Monday, everyone.
We don't have a big audience out there today, but we're thankful for all of you who are here today. We have three proclamations, and the first one today will be our proclamation of April 30th, 2022, as Beta Sigma Phi Day. Were those in the audience, for this proclamation, please come forward. Come on up here, okay, so the camera can get the best picture. The camera gets on. The month of April is a fitting time to honor Beta Sigma Phi, the world's largest Greek letter women's service cultural and social organization with six chapters in San Angelo. The badge of the organization signifies life, learning, and friendship by its Greek symbols, Beta Sigma Phi. Today, we recognize San Angel Beta Sigma Phi for the charitable work to our community. These women have raised thousands of dollars and donated thousands of volunteer hours to local charitable organizations. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2022, as Beta Sigma Phi Day for their achievements and positive determination to make a difference in our community. Thank you. Nobody? Just words of wisdom? They need members. And what else? Would you like to come right up here and state your name?
Not really. Hi. Thank you for letting us be here today. I'm Lana Thompson. I'm the president, fixing to be ex-president of Beta Sigma Phi City Council, our city council. Like Brenda said, we have six chapters, and we are looking for new members. Our chapters, we do community service projects and stuff for the community of San Angelo. So if you know of an organization that might need some help, volunteer hours, or anything, let us know. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Those in the audience to represent this organization, please come forward, if you would, please. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. Sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. In the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in 67 men have been raped at some time in their lives, and one in four girls and one in 20 boys are sexually abused by the age of 17. Sexual harassment, abuse, and assault can happen anywhere, including online spaces. Now more than ever, screens and technology connect us with others, but for too long, harassment, cyberbullying, and sexual abuse have been seen as unavoidable behaviors online. Each of us has the power to change that. Together, we can make a difference to build inclusive, safe, and respectful communities that thrive online and offline. 2022 marks the 25th anniversary of SAM, and the theme of this year's campaign is building safe online spaces together. We can build online communities free from sexual harassment, abuse, and assault by practicing digital consent, intervening when we see harmful behaviors, and promoting online communities that value inclusion, safety, and respect. Now therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Month and join advocates in communities across the country in proclaiming that we can build safe online spaces together.
Thank you for having us. My name is Melissa Hernandez. I'm the victim services advocate at Open Arms Rape Crisis Center and LGBT+ Services. We provide services to survivors of sexual violence, doesn't matter when it happened in their lifetime. We have, we offer counseling for free, we offer advocacy, and we offer education to the community at no cost. Our, we do have a 24-hour hotline that is staffed here locally in San Angelo, and we also need volunteers.
Our last proclamation is for World Autism Acceptance Month. Thank you for being here. April is Autism Acceptance Month and is an opportunity to recognize the contributions of individuals with autism and to dedicate this time to the cause of better understanding and responding to autism. Autism affects an estimated one in 54 children and one in 48 adults. Early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits. It is known that with proper education, training, and community living options, individuals with autism can lead distinguished, productive lives in their communities and strive to reach their fullest potential. The ABC Center for Children, a children's center for autism with MHMR Services, Concho Valley, is spearheading an awareness effort to educate parents, professionals, and the public about autism, highlighting the need for early intervention. The city is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Month to address the diverse needs of individuals and families affected by autism. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as World Autism Acceptance Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage all citizens to share the responsibility in promoting autism awareness. Greg, would you like to accept this and speak, please?
Morning. I'm Greg Rome, the CEO with MHMR, and the ABC Center for Children is a program of MHMR, and we're happy to be able to support families and children with a diagnosis of autism. We often do that, well, often free of charge, and we accept folks without insurance, whereas there are quite a few other providers in town that are insurance-based, which we do really appreciate that they are available. But what we try to do is support folks who have a great need but don't have a way to fund that. So what we work on is one-on-one therapy. It's called applied behavior analysis, and we have certified staff that work with kids, working on social skills, working on communication, how to interact with one another, which improves behavior. And the therapy we do is based on evidence-backed research, and actually, the earlier a child receives this therapy, the better they will do in school and in life. So we work really hard, try to train kids, and transition over to work with parents and also in schools and in the community. So we're very fortunate, and we thank the City of San Angelo, all of our representatives, the mayor, for our for your support and for everything we are able to do and accomplish with ABC Center. So thank you very much.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? Good morning.
I'm Bobby Igumayor, single-member district one. Is that right, Harry?
Would you speak a little, get closer to the microphone, Bobby? There we go. That's much better.
Okay. Not used to microphone.
We know, turn it up a bit, so you're speaking actually. There you go.
How's that?
That's great.
Good. I just wanted to report that the property that we had with the city is now vacant, and there's a few things that we have to do yet. Not nothing, but a fence, but we've been to the city several times, well, two, three times, and they can't give us an okay yet because they can't get a quorum. But once they get the quorum, well, we'll work with them on a fence.
Is that the quorum on the city parks board?
I'm not sure which one they're going to, but the fence has not been an issue for us. I mean, we'll work through it, so the timing isn't a...
Okay.
Also, just wanted to say that at some future date, we would like to talk to the city about re-renting that property, also maybe purchase part of it. We've got a, the park behind Vogels is our access to the basement and back part of Vogels, and so it's actually, it's our way of getting into the basement part, and it butts up to the city street, not street, but park, I guess. And so we need to see about getting that straight some, at some point in time, either through sales or through rent or...
Just to be clear, we cannot sell city property that's parks. That parkland cannot be sold.
I understand that, Brenda, but I would like to see where that is in law. If you could get your man to show me that.
It's in the deeds of the property.
Yeah, there's a provision in the local government code regarding sale of park property, and it requires it to go to an election before you can do it, so it's very difficult to do. We couldn't just sell it outright, but that is in the local government.
Well, we'd like to approach that point, too, so anyway, we've got, we've done what we said we'd do on the park the city wants right now. And so I just wanted to report to you all that it was a hell of a deal.
Thank you, Bobby.
We think we're doing the city a good job, so hopefully the store will continue to bring people down here. So anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? Seeing none, we will now move into our consent agenda. Is, I will ask each council member if there's any item on the consent agenda that they would like to pull at this point. Larry? Karen? Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry? Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Karen, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will all take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, are there any nays? Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is passed seven to zero. We will now move into the regular agenda items. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first item is presentation of the 2021 City of San Angelo Development Corporation Annual Report, and the presentation will be made by Economic Development Administrator Nolan Sosa. Nolan, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Valenzuela, Nolan Sosa, Economic Development Administrator. Today, I am proud to present the 2021 Development Corporation Annual Report. So a few years ago, city council recognized that in order for San Angelo to remain competitive and for all of us to achieve sustainable economic growth, we needed to make strategic investments in our city's transportation infrastructure. So when city council comes to the Development Corporation and lays out our priorities, they were very clear and very simple, and in fact, Mayor Gunter summarizes them in just three words: planes, trains, and automobiles. Starting with planes. In 2021, we substantially completed the apron paving and storage building installation for the U.S. Customs and Border Protection Air and Marine Operations Center, CBP AMO. Previously, the CBP AMO operated out of temporary modules installed on temporary foundations. They didn't have enough ramp space to maneuver those larger drone aircraft, and they didn't have sufficient facilities to store those aircraft in support of their mission. So the Development Corporation funded a $1.1 million expansion project. We improved the paved ramp area, we installed a new storage building, and we moved to permanent foundations for their radio and ground control systems. So these improvements allowed us to retain the unmanned aerial vehicle mission at Mathis Field, which attracts highly skilled workers to San Angelo because it creates high-paying jobs. In fact, it creates about 60 high-paying jobs, each of which pays, on average, above $100,000 a year. So we're very proud of that mission, and we want to do everything that we can do as a development corporation to support their efforts here in San Angelo, Texas, at Mathis Field.
Is there any opportunity to increase their number, the number of missions?
I will just say, Mayor, that we are in some very serious discussions to make exactly that happen, so there is more exciting things to come on that in 2022. So whether a company is holding a site visit here to bring their company to San Angelo, or a visitor is passing through San Angelo for the first time, the airport is an important gateway that casts a first impression of our city. It's how we welcome people to San Angelo. And beforehand, the open space right as you exit the airport road, it was undeveloped, it was unkempt, and it was frankly an eyesore that cast a negative first impression on our city. So the Development Corporation undertook a multi-phase improvement project to start beautifying that area. In Phase One, we cleared brush and trees. In Phase Two, we graded the land, seeded it, and installed fencing. And then in the final phase, we constructed a new welcome monument that proudly welcomes visitors into our city. And just to borrow a phrase from Diane Baze at our destination marketing organization, "It all starts with a visit." And so we have to start looking at this airport as a gateway that welcomes people into our city and gives them an impression of how proud we are to be San Angelans. So we were proud to participate in that effort.
Many people have commented, citizens, on how great that gateway is.
Thank you.
It's had a nice impact.
Yes, ma'am. Even though public investment has spurred positive economic growth at our airport, of course, our longer-term objective at the Development Corporation is to encourage private investment and enterprise at our airport. And in 2021, we took a very, very important first step in that direction by partnering in a public-private partnership with Skyline Aviation. Under the P3, as we call it, Skyline Aviation has agreed to serve as a construction manager at risk to improve facilities at our airport. They plan to rehabilitate the GTE hangar, construct two new parking lots, that's rental car parking that we desperately need at our airport, and more general parking for cars parking out at the airport, making improvements to the commercial apron immediately adjacent to that hangar, and constructing a new terminal, lounge, and conference space for a fixed base operator at our airport. By participating in this initiative, the Development Corporation is showing private enterprise, "Approach us. Come talk to us. We will partner with you and walk alongside you with our dollars to make development happen at our facilities." So we're very proud of this project. So trains. Before I move into a discussion about trains, I do have to give a nod to Michael Looney and his efforts with the San Angelo Regional Manufacturers Alliance. Back in 2017, Michael gathered our area manufacturers, sat down with them, and asked them, "What keeps you up at night? What challenges are your businesses facing, and how can we help you be successful?" And so from those meetings, one of the key concerns that were raised was the high cost of freight to move goods in and out of San Angelo. And so our Development Corporation Board and this city council recognized that we needed to make strategic investments in improving rail infrastructure to bite down on those shipping costs. So how did we start? We engaged a consultant, an expert in the field, Roger Horton from Shea Transportation Consulting. We asked him, "What do we do? How do we develop rail infrastructure?" Roger connected us with Shad Wisner from South Plain Lamesa Railroad, who operates two successful rail ports, one in Slaton, Texas, and another in Pueblo, Colorado. In 2019, the Development Corporation purchased a vacant tract of land and have now partnered with South Plains Lamesa Railroad to develop that land into a multimodal international transloading facility. Once completed, this facility will strengthen our local economy, and it will position San Angelo very strategically as an international shipping point. So I do want to thank Shad, Roger, and their teams for all the work that they've done to build a world-class facility here in San Angelo, Texas. So automobiles. You have likely heard that San Angelo is one of the largest cities in the United States without access to an interstate, and that has changed. Decades ago, both the Development Corporation and city council understood and appreciated that interstate access was critical for San Angelo's long-term economic growth. So we increased our advocacy by participating in Ports to Plains Alliance, Transportation Advocates of Texas, and the Gulf Coast Strategic Highway Coalition. Our efforts have paid off with the United States Congress officially designating San Angelo as part of the proposed I-14 corridor. So what does this mean? A 1,300-mile route will extend across five states and will connect several military bases. This route is often called the Forts to Ports Corridor. It connects military bases, including Goodfellow Air Force Base, across a five-state route. What's next for us? In the months and years ahead, we will plan and work with our partners to get funding for these projects, to plan out the route more formally. It will involve some careful coordination with U.S. Congress, U.S. Department of Transportation, and all the state legislatures and transportation departments along that five-state corridor. In a similar way, like I said, we participate in the Ports to Plains Alliance and have been advocating very strongly to be a part of the I-27 route, which came to fruition in March 2022, when Congress designated San Angelo as part of the future I-27 route. We do expect both I-14 and I-27 will intersect right here in San Angelo, Texas. So we're going to go from having no interstate to having two interstates connecting San Angelo, and that is due in large part to the dedication of all of the council members, our mayor, and our directors that have served on that Ports to Plains Coalition. These expansions, of course, will attract new enterprise to San Angelo. We will create jobs. It will offer additional trade opportunities, and it will also draw significant tourist traffic here to San Angelo, Texas. Our Business Retention and Expansion Program, this, when you hear about the Development Corporation giving BREPP incentives, it's a program that helps individuals who are interested in expanding their business take that next step. We help them make additional capital investments, and we help them add personnel to their business, or even a combination of those two. BREPP incentives can take many forms, whether those are direct monetary grants, tax rebates or tax abatements, or even non-monetary assistance like funding training initiatives. We encourage job creation and business development, and the BREPP is an important tool in an economic developer's tool chest because if a company is fielding the idea of leaving San Angelo or cutting back their numbers, maybe through layoffs or reorganization, we pull out that BREPP program as an incentive to help them stay here and keep that business here and growing. So we currently maintain 14 active agreements, as small as $5,975, and some as large as over $1 million. So we are very proud of that program, and we'll continue to focus our efforts on helping businesses grow here in San Angelo, Texas. Our Business and Industrial Parks saw a lot of activity here in 2021. For those that don't know, our Business and Industrial Park is a master plan site that is designed to help facilitate business expansion here in San Angelo. We've received a lot of accolades for that park. We've been designated as an AEP quality site and as a superpark by a site selection consultant group. All of that means that our park exceeds the strict requirements that... All of that means that our park exceeds the strict requirements that site selectors look for when they're trying to decide where to place a company. So we're very proud of that effort. And really, our goal in developing that industrial park was really simple. We want to make it easy for these industrial companies to locate here in San Angelo, and we want to cut the red tape by having property that's already zoned, developed, and ready for them to start building a building and start moving dirt out there.
You know, I read consistently about a lot of small cities across the state of Texas, some pretty close to San Angelo, who are, in fact, getting lots of new manufacturing industrial development in their small cities.
Yes, ma'am.
And with this industrial park and the work that we're doing, why is San Angelo not being what, the name San Angelo's not even on tips of their tongues in terms of a city that is a potential location for these businesses? And when I say "these businesses," there's multiple ones, but Terrell, Texas, just last week announced a big one, multimillion-dollar facility employing 100 people. Taylor, Texas, has gotten some significant ones. Abilene's gotten two significant projects in recent months. And yet, San Angelo's not even a consideration by many of these people. Let's talk about that.
You're exactly right. And, you know, one of the challenges that we face, I talked to Misty in Abilene and Adrian in the Temple area, and one of the things that we have that challenges us is the governor's office often puts out requests for information to see what sites could potentially house these larger companies, these larger industrial developments. We work very closely with Michael Looney at the Chamber on these requests for information. One of the biggest challenges is the disqualifying criteria. Interstate access, and often, do you have a rail-served industrial park? So, you know, we start looking at these requests, and it's like, we're not located within 20 minutes or 15 minutes of an interstate highway. And these metroplex areas, even small cities like Taylor that you mentioned with the Samsung acquisition, their proximity to Austin to draw those highly skilled tech workers into Taylor, Texas, was a major determining factor in Taylor getting that investment. In fact, when I was at TEDC, the Taylor Economic Development Center president was there talking about how that selection process went, and Taylor was a prime candidate just because of the factors of their workforce. So there's a lot of different elements that go into that, and so we have to attack that...
Talk about that, their workforce. They're a city of 15,000 people.
Right.
So how would they have a workforce that would be greater than our workforce with a population of 15,000?
Their 15,000-population workforce isn't what site selectors really consider when they're bringing a company. In fact, they do a heat map, Mayor, of who can reach the plant within a 15-minute commute, a 30-minute commute, and a 45-minute commute. Because we have to remember, in San Angelo, Texas, we can get everywhere within 15 minutes. In Austin, a 45-minute commute really is nothing to them. So these highly skilled Austin workers are able to commute to Samsung for their daily job. They have telecommuting arrangements that make it easy for a city like Taylor that's just right there near Austin to get a company like Samsung. And we, being so remote, face that challenge of access to workforce is really San Angelo and Tom Green County. Yes, ma'am. Before I move on to talk about Phase One and Phase Two, I do want to give a nod to Bob Schneeman. He is our Economic Development Project Manager, but he is really the driving force behind everything that goes on at the industrial park. So I do have to recognize Bob for his knowledge and his expertise that he brings to the team. You might recall that we sold several tracts of land. Over the past years, we've sold land to Principal LED, Allen's Transport, FedEx, and countless other companies at our industrial park who have decided to locate there. We did not sell property in 2021, and about 18 acres remains available for purchase with another seven under option right now. We're already looking forward to Phase Two. In 2019, we awarded the construction bid for Phase Two to Reese Albert. Phase 2.1, we break it into two different parts. Phase 2.1 will be funded by us at the Development Corporation, and Phase 2.2 will be funded by a grant by the United States Economic Development Administration. We've already awarded the brush-clearing bid, and we'll begin that project in the next couple of weeks. Once it is complete, another 118 acres will become available for development. So there is still a lot of work, a lot of activity going on at our industrial park, and we're very, very excited about that. It'll just continue to make us more competitive as we work on some of the things that the mayor has just pointed out. Education and workforce development. So when the Mikes, as I call them, Mike Looney and Mike Berry at the Chamber of Commerce are working to attract a company here to San Angelo, one of the first questions that any responsible site selector is going to ask is, "Do you have the workforce that's ready to sustain our operation in your city?" And so we recognize that the labor market is tightening, and competition for workers is ramping up at a pace that we've never seen before. And so talent development is critical. And where does talent development start? It starts with education in our schools. And so that's why we have partnered with the San Angelo Independent School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and industry partners Ethicon and Principal LED to fund the SME Prime program at Central and Lakeview High Schools. It's a partnership with the Society of Manufacturing Engineers that provides industry-relevant training, very specialized training. I just want to recognize SEISD here. They are the second school district in the state and the first school district in West Texas to get this program. And when I talked to the representatives from SME Prime, they gave a nod to how special San Angelo is. You know, they've deployed this program really around the state and around the country. And one of the things that they remarked is, they have never seen a city that brought this level of public support and that engaged with businesses who just opened their checkbook, wrote a check to support getting this program moving forward. And they said that San Angelo really is special for that, and they attribute a lot of the success of this program to the support that our community has for educating our schoolchildren. And our participation in this effort is really to reflect our commitment to developing a skilled workforce so we can attract these companies. We want to make sure that we meet the employers' hiring needs that we have here, and we also want to make sure that San Angelo stays competitive so we can bring those technical companies to our city. Business Plan Competition is a collaboration between the Development Corporation, the Angelo State University Small Business Development Center, and the ASU Norris Vincent College of Business. We, at the Development Corporation, provide the prize monies, we administer the prize agreements, and we serve as a co-coordinator of the competition. We kicked our 2021 competition off in May 2021 with 30 entries. Nine advanced to Phase Two, and five advanced to that final judging phase where they get to present their business plan to our independent judging panel. And I'm excited to announce that first place was Cowboy Up Chocolates, who received a $40,000 award, and Medical Arts Pharmacy won third place and a $10,000 award. So we're already ready to kick off our '22 competition next month. I do want to take a moment, just a moment, to recognize Nora Navarez on our team for all of her work on making this competition so special. Her and the ASUSBDC team, along with the Norris Vincent College of Business professors, make this competition so successful as we move into Year Seven. And the Business Factory is another Nora effort, along with the Small Business Development Center. We manage the Business Resource Center, and the ASUSBDC helps market that incubator program to interested businesses. And a lot of people ask us, you know, "What is an incubator?" Well, if you think about it, you've got a business that is in its infancy stages, where it's really volatile. You hear all these statistics all the time about X percent of businesses fail in the first X years. Well, we're trying to make it easy for businesses to be successful in San Angelo by providing affordable rent, stepping that rent up over time. And in the meantime, we provide all the overhead, the internet, the utilities, all the office accommodations, because we want them to get in there and start building their business up without worrying about any of the other stuff that you might have to worry about in those first couple of years. And it's also advantageous for them because think about who's just downstairs. You've got small business advisors to provide training and business advising, and you've got the Development Corporation there to help get you connected with all those city and governmental processes that you might be a little afraid or intimidated to access. We can help facilitate those conversations, and we often do, and we're proud to do that. And so over time, we step that rent rate up until they finally graduate into a facility that they either build, buy, or lease. And that's exactly what happened in 2021 with Centurion Planning and Design. They graduated in June, and we have two offices currently occupied of our seven. We are actively marketing the other five offices. I do want to thank Dave Erickson and his team for all of the work that they do to help market our Business Factory. And I will just say this in closing. 2021 was an extremely busy and extremely successful year for the Development Corporation. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Gunter and this city council for their continued support of our efforts. I want to recognize Max Pueyo, our Board President and our Board of Directors, for their guidance and their leadership, along with Guy Andrews, our Director. And you heard me acknowledge a lot of our partners today, and that's really important because economic development doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes an entire village. Every day, I get to come to work with a very dynamic village of people who are committed to making San Angelo grow and improve. That's the Chamber, the SBDC, and all of our partners. We could not do what we do without them, and so we're very proud to build on the success of 2021 in 2022. And there are certainly, certainly more exciting things to come. So thank you all.
Any questions for, yes, please?
Okay, so Noah, number one, excellent job. Number two, I've got some questions that get, you know, given to me quite often, so I'm just going to flip them over to you so that way I can say, oh, Nolan said this instead of my first...
Wonderful.
Absolutely. When do you think the rail port will be complete on their construction? And we're not going to hold you to it. Is this a two-year, three-year down the line?
May I answer that for you?
Sure, I asked Nolan, either one.
We anticipate it'll be complete fairly shortly. I mean, we would anticipate sometime at least in the next 12 to 18 months, and that's a pretty generous estimate, but it all depends on different factors. You know, one of the things that we struggle with at the rail port is that the demand for what we're going to build out there and how we're going to construct this depends on the people that are buying up the land in that area. For instance, if Company X requires a large footprint, then we've got to kind of pivot and adjust our construction around that. So the biggest answer is, we hope soon, but it's an asterisk because we're actively negotiating with different parties to sell land at that rail port, and it can get difficult at times to give that type of estimate.
Guy Andrews, Director, let me just expound further on that, is that we are actually open for business, and you should see the first trains in there probably within the next month. Well, one of the things we were waiting on was a locomotive, because you have to have that to do switching. That's in place. The first two tracks are in place, and so we do have a customer that's taking first 19 acres in that park that would be bringing aggregate material out of the Alpine area and placing it on that. A scale, commercial scale, is installed out there so that they will be able to then sell that. So it comes in phases. Again, just a reminder, and it also applies to our industrial park, that economic development's a marathon, punctuated at times by sprint. We do have our industrial park, and I'll make a comparison to what I've seen in my career, is that Odessa had a business industrial park for 40 years. They would sell maybe one or two parcels of property over that period of time. When I got to Odessa, they had $200,000 as a result of sales in there. Timing is everything, and it depends on when the economy is ready to do that. When I left, there was $10 million in the bank, 30 parcels of property, so we're ready for that type of development to take place.
Well, and he's moved forward with that contracts from people to ensure that there's lots of flexibility, so we're not waiting for people to designate what they need. We're ready to open business, and there are two big issues. One's electricity, and one is water. Electricity is up and running, and water's being discussed.
All right, so that was one of three. When do you think you would see an I-14, I-27 influencing it altogether? I mean, is this a 10-year projection?
Oh.
I have lots of people on the north side of town say, "This affects the way we see it on paper, how it's coming." What is that timeframe?
Certainly not. I mean, just the planning stages for large-scale capital projects. And we have to remember, I-27 is unique in that a lot of that planning can happen in Techstock, but it also requires coordination with the Department of Transportation. I-14, like I said, state legislators, U.S. Congress, you're looking at a planning stage that's going to take multiple years. It's taken decades to get to this point, so I would say at least 20 years before we really see dirt moving on a project of that scale.
What the plan is, is the following, and that is, is that each individual city will use their MPOs to start the work on projects that will ultimately unite all of the cities through that corridor. For example, our Reliever Route is in the planning stage, and our commitment is to get the Reliever Route in place so that as we look to expand our current highway system, that Reliever Route is the first project. And that will happen as well in all the other cities, whether it's Sonora, et cetera. So the big challenge is, there's been no work done on buying land. There's, we don't have land purchases done, et cetera. But each community is developing a game plan in terms of what they can do so that sometime down the road, whether certain segments are 10 years out, some will be 15, some will be 20, but there will be work done on each of those segments by local communities. And in our MPO meeting this past Thursday, we discussed the work on the Reliever Route in the north, which is out by Howard College.
And it's, we get lots of questions. And I know when we were talking our campaign, it was like, planes, trains, automobiles, but the thing to make sure San Angelo is here for the next 100 years in the capacity we are greater is that some people thought this was like a four-year window, and all of a sudden, everything's going to hit, and they just need to understand these things take time. The last question I have for you, on the BREP programs, how many people actually want, at the final stage of it, actually come through and take the redemption? I mean, finish up and make a claim on the BREP? I mean, I know we dedicate lots of time and money to it, and in some of those discussions, I think a lot of these people, once they're successful and they go through it, do they actually come back and get the incentives we give, or do they forfeit some of those?
You know, most of the time, we have a pretty high success rate. I can only think of less than a handful of companies that we've awarded a BREP agreement to that haven't either taken advantage of the entire amount, or some who have reached a certain point in their business where they don't feel comfortable taking the incentive anymore and return it back to the Development Corporation. Of the 14, I anticipate all 14 will liquidate that entire amount and use the entire agreement to support their business, and that's what we want them to do. So we're excited for that.
Cool. Nice job.
You had to get these questions in because you only get me in front of you about one time a year, don't you?
You don't let these opportunities pass you by.
Golly.
All right, Nolan?
What other questions?
I just wanted to make a statement, and thank you, Noah. Thank you very much for all your information and your hard work. And it really impressed me how many people you did acknowledge, that y'all are actually really a big team to get it done.
We are, and we love it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Item B, consider awarding by board contract number 613-20 municipal pool filtration system replacement to Progressive Commercial Aquatics Incorporated, and the amount of $262,045 utilizing the general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Brent, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Daniel, council members. I am Brent Casey, your Recreation Manager for almost seven years, maybe the first will be seven years. Municipal pool, first time I walked in there, didn't know what to think. The current filtration system is a Filterx filtration system. It was purchased from an individual in New Jersey. His name was Ken. Within three weeks of me being on this job, I called Ken and said, "You're coming down here." He had to come down here and train myself, my staff, and teach us some different things about that filter system, which he did. He was here for two days. We've had many issues with it. We've had to replace numerous things on it, and it's a very complex piece of equipment, but it's really not if you get into the nuts and the bolts and understand how it works. So it's all ran by air, compressed air. It's got an air tank over there, air compressor, rather large one, and it shuts down different things, opens different things, and when everything works perfectly, it works very well. But the issues, we've had tons of them since day one, but then they began to get even worse from the freeze of last year, 2021. So once that happened, you know, my pool in my backyard had lots of issues because of that, too. Everything that was visible, we had people come in, and it was fixed. Every pipe that was busted, everything like that, it was done. On the outside of the pool, over by the slides, from everything in the mechanical room... On the outside of the pool, over by the slides, from everything in the mechanical room, everything was good until the electricity went out. So we all remember that. But once the electricity went out, we had tons of issues, but everything was fixed at that point in time to get back up and running again. So we were able to get up and running for last year full season, but then in June, and again in July, the system was hit by two strikes, two different strikes of lightning, one in June, one in July. So we had to close the pool on July the 3rd, which everyone knows that's Pops Concert Day, so we have a big event at the pool that evening to go along with that. So July 3rd, the pool was shut down. We were there all day working on it. We got an electrician to come in. He got it up and running for us, and we had to do everything manual. So from that point in time, the air tank and everything like that, it would work, but we had to close off this valve, what was done automatically before. We had to go manually, because our systems were basically fried. So the two brains that talk to each other, sorry, were basically done because of the lightning strikes. So the rest of the season, we went manual with everything, which is hard on myself, hard on my staff. And when there's issues, they call us. We come in day and night, whatever. But we were able to keep the pool going. From that time, we've been working on the pool. We've been replacing different parts. We didn't just shut it off and leave it in September. We've been talking to people. We've been doing research. We've been trying to get things going correctly with the pool. We had a... The insurance risk brought out an engineer. He said that he could not prove that the damage that we currently have was caused by either storm, but he did agree that the lightning strikes were part of that damage, so those things will be paid for, which comes out to about $7,000 to replace basically what is... To make it simple, the brains of the pool system. There is a thing on the filtration system which is called a three-way valve. It connects the air compressor to everything that it goes to, and if any water gets in there, then you have to replace it. Once it gets water in it, it's done. We've replaced that so many times in the past seven years, but especially in the past couple of months, we've replaced it twice. So we finally brought in other people and said, what is the problem? So we got the people that we bought the air compressor from, who was here local, they came down and checked it out. They told us there's water in the air compressor. So it's normal to get some water in there, conversation from the air and everything like that. But there was so much water in there, the huge tank was about 3/4 of the way full. So we drained it, put a new one on. We got the system to bump one time. Great. It was great news. Everything was going. The system has to bump, just to... Sorry, trying to explain it here, but there's like two donut things on top of this huge filtration system. And what it does is it filters the water, and then to clean itself, it bumps, and it basically shakes the whole thing, and all the particles in there drain everything down, and then it releases the dirty water and fills back up the water and starts again. So the clean water keeps going through, obviously. But that bumping mechanism, without that, the whole filtration system is no good. So we've worked with Filtrix. We've exhausted pretty much everything that we can possibly do to replace different parts, talk to them on the phone, go through everything. We've had many different people come in and look at it, but basically what we've come up with is, that bumping mechanism will not work. It is done after it one time. It did not work again. We went back the next day, tried to bump it again. It was finished. So there is no way to replace that, is what we're being told. There is no way to work on that. It's the two donut things on the top, and it's not designed to be taken apart and fixed or anything like that. It's not designed to have anything go wrong with it. The only explanation I have is something happened during the storms, the lightning strike, or something like that to the thing.
I'm exhausted. I am exhausted. I think he is, I think he is, too.
The Filtrix filtration system is not something that is common in the state of Texas. So when we call Progressive Aquatics, who has installed everything except for that filter, they come in and they can work on everything except that filter. So we normally just call New Jersey, the individual that we normally talk to, his name is Ken, he's the one that we had come down here seven years ago. He recently passed away. So that's not good for us either, but basically, it's done. The filtration system is done. So without the funding, we will not have a pool this summer. We are requesting, recommending the total replacement of the filtration system with Progressive Commercial Aquatics. Progressive is on by board, and the whole total amount for everything comes out to $262,045.
Why didn't we use them to begin with?
It was designed by a company who did the renovations and stuff, and so at that time, that was the system that was recommended and the one council approved.
Did they know about this other company?
I have no idea. That's the one that was bid with the bid when it was designed. So I don't know anything about this company, except now, in doing research, they are one in Texas that's heavily used, and this group agrees that's who we should go with. They've got ASU, I think they do, and whoever... Who else here in town? Bentwood?
Um, yes. No, I'm sorry, not Bentwood. Angelo State uses them. There's lots of other ones. Austin is going completely to the new system that we're requesting to get for every single pool Austin, the city of Austin has. There are two going in at Round Rock ISD right now. We got pictures of them, talked to them about that, and they explained kind of what was going on. So we got to see what the new filter would look like and everything through photos. So I'm sorry.
Some other West Texas cities, but in defense of the existing system, it sort of has reached its age. It's not uncommon at this point for the system to start going down. The system's more complicated, we think, than it should be, and this new system will do that. It has been a good filtration system. It's not that it didn't work. It's just at this point...
When will the pool open this summer?
Yes, ma'am.
When?
When? Well, if this is approved, then it will take six to 10 weeks unless they happen to have one of these filters already on the shelf. If it's on the shelf, we'll get it faster than that. But six to 10 weeks to manufacture that filter. So then, after it's built, six to 10 weeks, then it will be delivered, and then Progressive Commercial Aquatics will be here when it gets here to take out the old one, unload that one, and put it right in. So that's an agreement that we've worked out, but we do not know the exact date yet. But if there's not one sitting on a shelf, then it will be six to 10 weeks before it even is made.
What we need to be concerned about is the radio ad that is talking about, please call us and book your summer parties, your birthday parties. We're opening Memorial Day weekend. Come book your pool parties. So if we're not going to have... Be open for Memorial Day weekend, we need to get rid of that. Come book your party now.
I'm not sure where they got that, because I did not look that anywhere.
It's on the radio.
Okay. I will call every radio station and figure that one out, but we put up...
Also clarify on that, and we'll check into that. I think Carl was... It was discussed last week, but in addition to that, they have not been taking bookings at the pool when people call, so they've been telling anyone who calls. So I don't think you currently have any current bookings that are available. So they have been working on that. And we'll look into the other.
We normally start taking them the Monday after spring break in March. I pushed that back because we were waiting on the sheet from the engineer that came at that point in time, so.
No, I appreciate it. I just know, I heard it yesterday on the radio again. So I know it's out there being publicized that it's open for booking parties effective eight, you know? I think it says Memorial Day weekend, but it might be sooner than that. I don't know. Yes, Lucy?
Okay, so you're saying four to six weeks, or what? Just give us a ballpark month.
End of June.
Is the best. I mean, it could be the 1st of July, but that's...
Maybe by the Pops Concert.
And this filtration for $262,000, what's the lifeline span of it?
15 to 20 years. It does have a warranty that covers everything for the first year, and then certain parts go longer than that.
The warranty is just good for one year?
I'm sorry?
Warranty is only good for one year?
For to cover everything on that filtration system, yes.
Gets two lightning strikes again, well. Hopefully insurance kicks in at that point.
Pray for rain, however.
Does insurance not pay for that?
They paid for a portion, and RISK would have to cover that on some of the initial freeze and those kind of things. And then over time, as I understand it, the deductibles have changed, all of that gibberish that goes with insurance.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
So when this... Is the pool dry right now?
No, sir. It has to keep water in it because of the plaster.
Anything we need to do while there's a period of non-use that would be handy to do right now before we... I mean, it seems to me like once a year, we're always doing repairing something of concrete or whatever. Are we in a good shape that all we need is this system to be 100% go?
I know, so everything with the pool is good, except for lots of cleaning. But yeah, that's something we deal with every year at this time. But the concrete and everything is good. There is one small rock that's down, but it's a minor, minor fix.
I'll remember, I think it was last year, y'all did a lot of work as far as cleaning the slides. They're bright color now, and a lot of plaster work, so they did a ton. And just to give them a little praise, they are not pool operator experts, and they have learned a lot. He and John Henry have gone above and beyond.
I swear, I heard Brent say he had a pool.
Much smaller one.
He's getting rid of it. He just hasn't said that out loud yet.
Fixing up a skateboard park, so we're fixing to have.
Wife will let me.
Mayor, I'd move approval as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lucy. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? With no nays, motion passes seven to zero. We will now move into the closed session. Executive Session on the Provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551. Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 17.583 Acres, Lot 9D, Block 2, Section 9A, Retiroya Hills Edition. We will go into closed session at this point. Session at 9:51 a.m. And during the closed session, we agreed to authorize the sale of 17.581 acres, known as Lot 9D, Block 2, Section 9A, Retiroya Hills Edition, for $1 million to E. and B. Bryant Properties LLC, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents.